Portage County Board of Supervisors Meeting, recorded September 20th, 2022.
It's five o'clock. We'll call the county board to order. Roll call.
Twenty-three supervisors present, Supervisor Rockman is excused, and Supervisor Hakala is remote.
Pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation by Supervisor Moro.
God, as we begin a new school year, we thank you for the wonderful schools we have in Portage County. And we ask that you keep our students, educators, and support staff safe and healthy. And thank you, God, for all the blessings of this life. In your name, amen.
Review and approval of August 16th, 2022 minutes, moved by Lattick. Seconded by Dubek. Discussion, corrections, changes? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Correspondence?
Number three, we have the Aging and Disability Resource Center of Portage County 2021 Annual Report. Number four, we have the upcoming county board meeting dates and information. And number five, we have the Wisconsin Counties Association Forward Analytics, the Green Book, a book of county facts.
So, this, this green book, if you get an opportunity, just prove through it, there's a lot of good information in here. For those of you who were at the conference, Dale Knapp is the gentleman that, that works with us all this data, data and figures, and he was one of the guys I was gonna see if we could get to come down here and give us a little presentation as well. Lots of, lots of information in there. Also, I wanted to make sure everybody's aware that, because we have a lot of new folks, that in October, we do our budgets and do our budget hearings. So, we have another meeting October 4th. And a meeting on October 11th. And, uh...
The 25th.
And we have one the 25th?
Yes, that's, that's...
That's out of sequen-- it's not, it's not printed on here, but we're talking about having one for a committee of the whole where we can discuss the new construction as well, so don't go anywhere in the month of October, so. Alright, next item, number six, is presentation, Tegra Facility Master Plan Presentation. Take it away, Don.
We're gonna start to see some of the things that have been developing over the last several months with Tegra and the contractors that we have hired. And tonight, Tegra is going to do the presentation as to what we will, can be expecting to happen in the next month or so. With us, I'd like to introduce our owner's rep, who is Tegra, Nate Pearson. And Nate is a principal with the company. And Mike Van Kly is our project manager. They're going to give us a little talk as to where we are at, what we have done so far, and where we intend to be in the next month. So, Mike and Nate?
Thanks, Don. Hey, good evening, yeah, good to see you all again, Nate Pearson again with the Tegra Group. And I'm gonna just do a quick intro, and then Mike is gonna get into some details. But, we're gonna talk a little bit tonight and give you an update for that October 25th meeting. So, we'll see you in a month, but the last time we were here was a couple of months ago where we were talking about bringing a construction manager on board, Fendorf, and we've done that. So, on the screen, I just wanted to remind everybody who the team is and what we were, what we were working on here. So, again, Tegra Group, we're the owner's rep, think of us as an extension of your staff, of the, of the county's staff. Where we oversee the project, we're responsible for budgets and schedule and drive the process, so I wanted to remind you of who we were. But, Dewberry and BWBR, they are the architects, you've seen them, I think, for the past couple of times as well. But, just a reminder, they are experts in law enforcement and, and courts and jail design. And then Fendorf, Joe, I see him in the back too. Fendorf was selected and they're out of Wausau and Madison, so local representation there. And, and they're helping us now getting into the pricing and the actual construction scheduling. We haven't talked about County Mutual. County Mutual is the other partner up there that you'll see on the screen. And what they're doing is representing risk assessments and county, or construction, planning with us and kind of under the heading of, of risk and safety. So, we're happy to have them on board as well. Also, tonight with us is, we're gonna hear from Sheriff Lucas and Judge Baker, who I haven't seen yet, but I think she's here. There she is. They're gonna talk a little bit in our presentation as well, so. Next slide, please. So, just a brief agenda of what we're gonna go through. Project status is coming from Mike in a moment. And then, you know, why is Portage County considering this project? And you'll hear a lot about that, that's kind of the meat of what we're talking about. And then we'll leave you with next steps. And we also want to talk about that meeting on October 25th and hopefully how we can, we, Tegra, can, can help the county prepare for that. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike and give you an update, thanks.
Alright, so, from a project status standpoint, we've gotten organized and set up some efficient plans and some meetings so far. Every Friday, we meet as a small group to just make sure that the project is moving forward and make sure we have the information that we need from the county and that the county has from us. We've had three all-day design workshops so far, so we're starting to understand what the facilities would need to look like to provide for the services that the county needs. We've got our fourth all-day design session tomorrow. We've validated the departmental programming or space needs. So, we spent time with department directors, the sheriff, courts, court services, along with all of the other government services to understand, again, what does the county need to be efficient in their space? And what would this new facility need to include? We've toured your existing buildings. We've been through the city county building, in-depth with, with the facility staff. We've toured, toured the jail, LEC, and we've also toured the annex. So, we understand what you're working with right now and how those could play into the future. And then, we've not toured Health and Human Services yet, but we have it in the back of our mind that it at least needs to be a consideration for what this project could ultimately be. So, if in the future, you wanted to bring it on campus, that would also be an option. We've evaluated risks, safety related to public, employees, and sanctioned individuals. Looking at recruitment and retention of staff and what would be required there, along with staff efficiencies. Nate mentioned Wisconsin Mutual, so they are currently your general liability and workers' comp carrier. And they did an audit last week on your facilities from an insurer's perspective, and they're working on a report for us right now. So, again, just let us understand what are the risks that other people are seeing from their perspectives. We've studied pros and cons of your downtown site and the greenfield sites. And we're looking at things like first costs, operational efficiencies for people and processes, adjacencies from departments, long-term maintenance and sustainability, both from an energy efficiency standpoint and also from just sustainability of the facility itself. So, we can go to the next slide. So, this is really the, the meat of what we are hoping to discuss with, with the, the group tonight. Is why is Portage County considering this project? And I'm actually gonna ask Sheriff Lucas to come up, speak a little bit about the law enforcement centerpiece, because that is definitely a consideration. So, if you could go to the next slide, please?
Thank you. First, I guess I'd like to see a show of hands on all the county board that have toured the jail and the LEC.
On our own accord, right?
On your own accord? Okay. Very good. So, I think it's very important that, that the county board, and I've opened this up to, you know, all of you to come in and tour the facility and have firsthand knowledge. And if you haven't seen it in a while, set up another time with me and we will do that again. But today, we're talking a little bit about the law enforcement center and, and the kind of the needs in regards to the building. First, I wanna get the monkey off the back, is back in 2014, you know, I campaigned hard to remodel the sheriff's office, thinking that we could do that. And in all honesty, once in 2016, when the price tag came in for $28 million, it wasn't feasible to do something like that, to reduce jail beds and to have a linear-style jail. So, that changed my perception in regards to what we should be doing for Portage County. Back then, we did these studies and we, we had similar circumstances in regards to that, but it's only increased over time. So, if you look at it from a safety aspect for my staff, when we bring people over from our jail facility, I think everybody has seen the orange jumpsuits walking across the street, through our lobby, through the public, up here, through the public hallways and into the courthouse. It's a security risk that, that we've dealt with since the building's been built in 1991. But we've also had occurrences that have happened during these, these years that I've been sheriff. Not gonna go into the details, but we've had a lot of occurrences that have happened in regards to the safety and security. So, imagine now we have the officers at risk along with the inmates, which is my responsibility to protect. And as I stated, in 1991, this, that building was built, 31 years. And I think everybody in here, especially Supervisor Pataki, can attest, it was built for the money at the time. We had a dollar figure that we could build for, and we built it for that at the time, and we are paying for that at this date. Right now, we're having trouble with latches, with toilets, with fixtures, because they have no replacements for these. We have no drains in our facility, as you, you saw in our facility when we did the tour. So, when we have a situation that goes on in our, our jail, you can ask our facilities director, Todd Noonfeld, that we have to bring in individuals to sanitize this because the sewer's back up, we have people plugging things up, and we have a, a extreme health emergency going on when, when this occurs. We also have, you know, these inmates, or if you look at that second graph, you have, you know, security aspects in regards to response times. So, back in 2015, I got mobilized or what I call substations on the county in, in the outlying areas so that the officers could sit out there, do their reports, so they could have quicker response times. But they still have to come into the sheriff's office for either data dumps or for briefings. So, when you look at it, we have 810 square miles in the county. We have set up in regards to three areas with, during day shift, we have three patrol officers out there for 810 square miles. Sometimes, we can actually go down to minimums, which is two. So, when you look at it and they come in for briefings for response time from the sheriff's office, you know, is my concern also. So, looking at feasibility in regards to road access and where we're going. The other thing, too, in regards to transportation of inmates, when, when we're looking at... You can go to the next, yes, the next slide. When you look at transportation, and we put this slide up here for one purpose, is to show in regards to our court security unit, the percentage of time in regards to transportations. And what this means is from prisons, from our jail to the courts, and all those are entailed, is, what is it, 80%? Is our duties. So, if you look at another facility where we don't have to do these transportation, we still have a transportation officer to take to prisons after sentencing, but we'd be eliminating a lot of our transportation costs with our safekeepers from other counties. So, those are things to consider in regards to a new facility. Second is, is our, our cumulative housing cost to date is about $12.8 million. And this, this goes in regards to our jail bed contracts. Right now, through Wood County, I believe, or not Wood County, Wapaka County, I wanna say it's about $485,000 just for housing our inmates. That's 35 safekeeper inmates over at Wapaka. That doesn't include any additional beds that we have to go for, medical beds, special facilities, or anything else. So, that's just for the, the housing alone. When you talk about the transportation and the cumulative cost for that, it's outlandish. Because we are, we are, we are putting a, a two-man officer usually for multiple trip, I'm going to and from for our court system. So, we, we've been dealing with this, and we've been doing a darn good job. Our, our staff is, does an excellent job, and our safety record is great. But there is that risk management portion that I deal with every day in regards to what could happen, what can, and what maybe will happen. So, those are things to consider. When you're talking about rehab and treatment, I've been a very strong proponent in regards to all the programs that we do in our facility. The other facilities that we transport these individuals to don't have these treatments and don't have these programs. So, the people that stay here have a leg up in regards to, you know, the AODA, the different types of counseling, the psychologists, the, you name it, that we offer here in Portage County that we can't get in some of the other counties. So, I mean, those are, those are things to consider that we can also improve on. The linear-style jail, I mean, everybody that walked through it, I think you can attest at how cumbersome that is for us to, to be able to walk through, do cell checks, be able to monitor all these inmates with the staff we have, with a new facility, with a pod system. Actually, the operations cost will go down because you have less staff because of the visibility of those pod systems. So, all those things, when you look at, I want you to look at the cost for the transportation to be absorbed back into the, the operations, which I think would be sufficient for a facility. And last but not least, I think improving the working conditions for your, your staff. I mean, the turnover rate that I have, the retention of, of our, our wonderful staff has been great, but it can be a heck of a lot better with a facility that is conducive for them and for safety and security of our inmates. So, those are all things in regards to consideration, in regards to, you know, coming up in regards to the jail facility, the, the law enforcement's facility, and again, when we're talking about the whole facility, you have to look at the, the LEC too, because I don't have any offices left. I'm trying to find an office for a situation right now, but I don't, I don't have any. I'm using closets for my detectives. The communication center is too small for the staff that we have, which is, you know, understaffed. But, these are things that, that we have to address. We can't keep putting them off, because since 2015, the prices have gone like this. And they're gonna continue. And, and I just really want the county board to look at this, and we, we've got the three pegs of this system, and, and make that choice, you know, on October 25th. Thank you. You guys got anything else?
Yeah.
Oh, questions?
Sheriff, if you use the term "safekeeper inmate," that's a term I'm not familiar with. Can you explain what a safekeeper inmate is?
Sorry about that. Our safekeepers are our inmates kept at a, a separate location. So, it's, it's basically one of my, you know, our maximum daily population is about 103, and out of the 103, 35 of those are placed in another facility contracted through Wapaka. Some of them, we have contracted in other facilities and, and the ones that we... It's, it's an outreach of Portage County, so we don't have to rebook them backing in, so they're called safekeepers. Thank you. Yes?
Do you have any idea with your transportation and labor costs in a single year, just to estimate?
The...
$480,000?
So, when you're looking at the, my, transportation costs per year is approximately about $187,000. That's just for the transportation costs for the staff and, and vehicles. The cumulative total cost through 2019, or 2020, with transportation and housing was $12.8 million.
Yeah, in your design process now, my understanding was, a reason, one reason to have a much larger building besides just the jail space is that that space has a means of production of better outcomes for the people that are in the jail, in other words, preventing relapse into drug abuse or recidivism, mental health counseling. In other words, setting aside the staff question, you know, that's always a problem. But, is there, is there designing in facilities so that, you know, things can be done in-house without moving people all over the city to get their rehabilitation, I guess, needs met?
Yeah, we went through space needs, and in those space needs, we determined in regards to what we need for room size, for our programming, for our rehabilitation, our nursing. I mean, it's, the design is not there, the space needs are in there, so it's a big chunk right now. That, that's where we're at. But that's the sole purpose of this, because right now, we have a lot of programs, and we can only do one program at a time, because we, all we have is a library, basically, that houses that. So, we can't have the chaplain or the church program, we can't have the alcohol AAA program going on. We can't have the, the counselor, the psychologist will not come up here because of the safety concerns that are in the jail, so.
Yeah, thanks, you answered that.
So, one, one other thing to add to that, too, the 35 or the 30 that we send to Wapaka, they don't get any of those benefits or any of those services as well.
I get that.
And we still pay for medical. Yes.
We still have the school mentor program where, where some of the prisoners in there yet can't get a G D?
Yes, we do. And again, that, that is another kind of a sticking point, because we only have certain times that they can come in. And if we have intake court, that takes away from their time to go in there and actually have their school programs, because we have to clear that out, and, and that's where we do our video for our court and items like that. Yes?
Thank you, Sheriff Lucas. In, in your presentation here this evening, you said we have approximately 110 inmates on any given day. When we're looking at, I believe that was the figure, wasn't it, maybe 103, did you say?
Well, our maximum daily population for last year was, I think, 123. Right now, I, I believe we are at 103 today, if I looked at it correctly.
And that's fine, my question kind of is along those same lines. How, what percentage do we build, do we build above and beyond what our average daily incarceration is? Number one, if we had a few extra beds, maybe we are able to lease those out to another county and/or so that we have room. The population here in Portage County is going to grow. I mean, we have development going on. So, the percentage of that population, a certain percentage of that population, is going to end up in our facility. I'm wondering where we, where the line is, you know, what are we, what are we looking at? Are we looking at a 200-bed facility, you know, what, what is your opinion on that?
You know, going through these studies back in 15, we had somebody come and estimate, and they stated by 2022, we, we'd need a 400-bed jail. In, in all realistics, we've done a, a great job of, of evaluating our space needs, which I believe for the next 20 years. Looking at the next 20 years, I believe the, the 200-bed facility is gonna be enough for our classifications through DOC 350 in regards to the trends that we've been at. The, I think the expectations of Portage County in regards to the rehabilitation, the the beds that are gonna be needed. So, looking at, if you look at my cumulative in regards to what it stated prior to, in regards to the annual report, take a look at that, because I think that, that'll spell that out pretty good in regards to what, what is the expectations were back then? What are the realistic expectations of the future now? And, and as you can see, if you look at the last annual report, the jail beds needed for 2022 would be 170, and with classification, a 200-bed facility as well within the means. And then, it stays, it's been staying at about between 150 and 170 for the last eight years.
And if I may expand on that?
Sure.
Then I'm, I'm quite certain, I know the answer to this, but I'm assuming that you would agree that we should make sure the facility is designed in case we do need to expand that space?
Yep, that is, that has been my preach all along, is that expansion must be accessible.
It's been all of ours, I just wanted to hear.
Yep.
So, Sheriff, one, one other question, comment to that is, you, to be in compliance, you, full is 80% occupancy, right?
Correct. And, and there, there is some leniency in regards to the 80%, depending on the timeframe, but, once we build a facility or may do a major remodel, we have to abide by the DOC 350 rules present day, which is the classifications, which is the, you know, jail space needs, the, exactly what, what is needed in regards to that. So, that's why, again, on that remodel was out of the question, because once you do that, we, we take more time for exercise rooms and things like that to take up areas of the jail. Yes?
In making those projections for future use, are you able to take into account adult and adolescent breakout? I mean, I, I assume we do, we have some adolescents in the law enforcement center. And also, what is the breakout between male and female?
We have done a breakout, I don't have that with me, but we do have a juvenile facility, which is a priority for Portage County. That was addressed a long time ago, that we would be keeping the, the juvenile detention center. That would increase slightly, but the staffing that we have would be adequate for our new juvenile detention facility in this also.
Just to follow up to that, do we have to use facilities like Lincoln Hills? Do we have adolescents?
You know, once they get sentenced away, that is not my, my... We have space for our juveniles. I do have actual contracts with two other counties for juvenile detention for their inmates, juvenile inmates right now, just for the fact that so many have clothes throughout the state. But we make sure that we have space for our Portage County children.
Thank you.
When I went through it on a tour, the most surprising thing, I guess, I got from it was that even though you have so many beds capacity, you're, and a lot of people don't know what... We've been throwing around classifications, but if you can expand that a little bit, because I think people don't know that you, you know, when the, when you have a violent prisoner, they have to go somewhere. You have a juvenile, they have to go somewhere, and they, sometimes you can't get them all fit in the same jail space.
Yeah, we've, we've had that...
That alone, I mean, it might, you might have a 100-bed facility, but, again, because of that 80% rule, that kind of... You, you can't use the whole place most of the time.
Well, we, we cannot do classification properly right now with our facility. So, from medium, medium-high, to mediums, to, you know, low mediums, to low, we don't have that capability right now. So, there's, there's been times where we have a high classification with a low classification in the same pod. And the problem with that is that, you know, you could have somebody that is a murderer and somebody that is sitting on a revocation sentence. And, and all of us know that people are influenced by other people. And so, we try to keep the classification, but there's had times, especially during the COVID, we had, we had some really trying times in regards to classifications.
And just one follow-up. I give, I take my hat off to all your employees up in jail. They deal, they're in there, just like the prisoners, and it's, it's a, it's a, not a fun place. And the, the one thing I saw there was, someone showed us where they have breaks. I, I used to work a sentry, and we had practically a building to have a break in. And all those people over there have a break room that's half the size of that jury box to have coffee and, and whatever. So, my hat's off to those people that you can retain there, because they do a wonderful job under, you know, low-light situations and everything else, so. Thank you.
Then you looked at the big break room, because the little break room in the juvenile detention center is a toilet, a sink, and their kitchenette, all in a space of about four by four.
Amazing, amazing, just...
Sorry, I was just gonna say one thing. We, we planned a half hour, we wanted to be respectful of everyone. By no reason, we wanna stop conversation, but we also, there's some courtroom stuff that's also gonna come up, so just, so that everyone kind of knows the...
I told you.
I know.
He opened the can.
Go ahead.
Sheriff, would you state that, you think that the jail population is down because of COVID? And the fact that we did not have trials during that time?
I, I think that that has played a, a role in the last two years. You know, looking at 2018 and 19, there was, there started the reduction a little bit in regards to people coming into the facility because of COVID. And then, when courts were down in 2020, and not really, it was, it was law enforcement and the courts, because we were not accepting people, because we were at the point where we didn't want to infect other inmates and get people sick and have the, the medical bills. So, then we've kind of deferred the sentencing, and now we're starting to see it pick back up in regards to the people's... in regards to, um, the people starting to get their sentences.
Sheriff, uh, we'll let supervisor dodge and then that's it, I'm gonna get the hook out and, uh, we're, we're gonna move on. We, after, after supervisor dodge, we're gonna have plenty of other opportunities, uh, next month to talk about some of this stuff.
I just want to, um, go back in time a little bit. The last time that we went through this, we had supervisors that insisted that you could decrease the jail population with programming. Now, we have good programming, successful programming. As I watch what's going on around the country, it seems to me that cities and states are decreasing their jail population with a program called what, no cash bail or no cash bond? We have not done that here. I'm very proud of our district attorney's office and the judges, but I guess maybe I would like for them to speak to that a little bit because I think that's what those supervisors were talking about, that we don't need jail space because there are other ways of alleviating the problem. And as far as the community is concerned, I don't believe it's a rational decision.
We've got the two judges to speak on that in the next part of this, uh, presentation.
And I can say from a law enforcement standpoint is there's very few times that cash bail is issued. So. Thank you, Sheriff.
If the judges wanted to come up, um, to the next slide. All right, so, um, courts and court services are also another big part of the project. Sorry, maybe I could be here. And so we've asked the judges to come today and share a little bit of their experience as well.
I, I wanna, um, good afternoon, everybody. Um, I want to start off by thanking Supervisor Jakowski for asking that safe keeper's question, that was such a good question. Um, the safe keepers, they go to Wapaka County.
Your honor.
Judge, can you, can you?
Sorry. Okay.
The people at home as well, so, thank you.
The people that go to Wapaka County and I, and the, the sheriff talked about this, they don't get programming. And I gotta tell you, it's so frustrating to, um, as judge, to be asking, uh, folks, you know, do you have your G E D? Well, no, I don't have my G E D. You've been in jail for the last six months, how come, you know, what have you been doing? I've been in Wapaka County for the last six months. Well, so you haven't worked on your G E D over there? No, they don't, they don't offer that service. I mean, they don't offer that service for safe keepers. I think they, I think they offer it for Wapaka County, but they don't offer it for, um, our guys that we send over there. And we do, um, I gotta tell, I gotta tell you, our sheriff, in the space that he has across the street, because I used to do private practice, so I used to, uh, go over there as a public defender all the time, has done amazing stuff with these little teeny tiny spaces. And that library that he's talking about, if you haven't taken a tour of the L E C, please go over there and do that if, if for no other reason, just to look at that library, because they do so much in that library, and that library is about the same size as the jury box. Um, but what's worse yet is you go next door to the juvenile, uh, justice facility, the juvenile secured detention facility, and I'll tell you, we're only one of, um, I think, three or four counties left that have secured detention facilities, which is why we, I don't know how many, is it five, are there five left in the state?
Four, pretty much.
Four, okay, so not very many. But, um, I used to be on school board, some of you might have known me from school board. When I was on school board, um, I actually worked, uh, in there several times with, um, the guys that, uh, Patrick, Pat Leahy was our liaison officer and would work with the kids, uh, teaching them, uh, giving them classes, actually doing classroom work. But the room that they would do classes in, literally about a third the size of this jury box, and that's where the kids would be in their, their class, and they would line them up and, well, not would, they still do that today. They, I'm sure they did it this morning. Um, it's just amazing what they can accomplish in a teeny tiny little space. But, um, all that having been said, I just wanted to, um, point that out, the safe keeper's comment kind of got me going. So, um, let me introduce myself, I'm Judge Trash Baker. Um, I'm the presiding judge for the county, with me is Judge Louis Milewski, who is the head of our security and facilities committee. By standing, we are to have a security and facilities committee. Um, our security and facilities committee for the last couple of years has been, uh, not very active. Um, I'm very, very happy that Judge Milewski is, um, very excited about taking this on, taking on this, uh, uh, role. Thank you. Um, and, uh, and taking it on with some gusto because we have some tremendous security needs. So what I want to say first of all is this is kind of a high level overview, we were not anticipating getting into the weeds today, and just kind of pointing out some of the overarching areas. I know there's a number of new board members since the last time that I presented to the entire county board, which was probably, I don't know, eight or nine years ago. Um, there's quite a few new members, so I do want to field a few questions if you want, but I want to give you just kind of an overview of what our most important needs are and, and why we're talking about this new building right now. Um, but I don't want to get too much into the minutia because if you want, I can tell you about when the roof leaked and it killed, uh, Marcella Carlton's computer in the clerk's office. And I can tell you about the plumbing and I can, the plumbing on that side of the building, the plumbing on this side. I can tell you all about that stuff if you really want to know, but right now, tonight, the, the goal is just kind of a big overview. I wanted to start off with this picture, nineteen fifty-eight, that's the year that the building was built, although Mike here pointed out to me, that's the build, that's the year the building was dedicated, it was actually built in nineteen fifty-four. And by a show of hands, who here is in from that same decade? Yeah, yeah, or later, yeah. Okay, so you know, you know, this building is almost seventy years old. And when you get to be almost seventy years old, fortunately, I, I, that's not me just yet, but when you get that old, you need a lot of maintenance. And I, kudos to Todd for all of the maintenance that he has done, this building looks marvelous. The, the marble is great, the courtrooms are beautiful, it looks marvelous. And that, you know, many kudos to Todd back there for all of the work that he has done in making this building look so good. But you scratch the surface and there are some problems, uh, and that's what I want to get into. Um, I, I want to say one more thing about the age of an almost seventy-year-old building. There's a lot of things back seventy years ago that didn't exist, like the American with Disabilities Act. Um, that's something that, nobody even thought of that back then. And I want to tell you about that in a few minutes, I've got a reminder slide, um, if you want to go to the next slide. So when you walk out tonight, you're gonna walk out, you're gonna take a right, and you're gonna go past that long hallway. I gotta tell you, that long hallway is a killer, the sheriff could tell you more about that. Um, the clerk's office is at the end of that hallway, and we have hundreds of people come up here every single week. And what they are doing is they are coming up and going down that long hallway to the clerk's office, and, uh, it takes you all the way down there. I want to give you a couple of numbers because my, um, my assistant pointed out to me this morning, she said, "Did you see all the people up here yesterday?" And I said, "Oh, it looked like a normal day to me, is a lot, I don't know what the number was." And she said, "You know, by ten AM," she said, "I looked on the counter and there were a hundred and ten people that had gone through that scanner by ten AM yesterday." And I said, "That's interesting, I'm talking to the county board, how about I get those numbers?" So here are the numbers, folks. On September sixth, two hundred and nineteen people went through that scanner, two hundred and nineteen. Now, how many are in this room, maybe thirty? When you walk out, and you walk, and you'll all walk out most, mostly together about the same time. When you walk out, I want you to do something for me. When you're in that hallway, I want you to take a look around and see how close people are, and I want you to think about that. Two hundred and nineteen people passed through that between eight thirty and four thirty on Monday. Last Monday, the twelfth, two hundred and thirty people passed through. Yesterday, two hundred and fifteen people passed through. Now, I gotta tell you, I moved treatment court from Mondays to Tuesdays, I did that about six months ago. When I moved treatment court, it took about twenty people out of that mix on Mondays. So my guess is if you would go back to June, when we changed, uh, treatment court to Tuesdays, these numbers are probably about twenty people higher. That's just, uh, my guesstimate, because there's about twenty people that show up for treatment court that are not coming on Mondays anymore, so they are now coming on Tuesdays. So we have a lot of people down that hallway. Now, go to the next one, that hallway is empty right now. Okay, see the person at the very end, really squint, look hard, see the person at the end? That's our, yeah, there's a guy way at the end. His name is Andy Muchler, he's the, uh, newest ADA in the, in the, um, uh, District Attorney's Office. I asked him, I said, "Hey Andy, stand back there, I'm gonna take your picture." He's like, "What?" And I said, "Stand back there." I put that there for a purpose. You see this long, death-defying hallway, and the clerk's office is at one end, and everybody comes through at the other end, and we send everybody down there to go to the clerk's office to pay their fines and do everything else. Here's the other thing, right where Andy Muchler is standing, I should say ADA Muchler, where he's standing is the secure elevator for inmates. And this is where we're gonna start talking about security, and that's where, um, Judge Milewski's gonna come in. So the, the person that's standing back there, there's actually another person behind him, you can't see him, there's actually two people at the end. Both of them would have to do this when a prisoner is pulled out of the elevator. And get up against the wall. That's what happens every single day, every single day, the sheriff, uh, the deputies are bringing over inmates, and they're walking them across the street, which is just like, I'm still scratching my head over that after twenty-five years of practicing law in this county, I can't believe we're still doing that. You walk them across the street, you walk them up the stairs, they got shackles on their ankles, I'm surprised nobody's ever fallen and broken a leg. And then they walk them inside, they take them up the elevator, and they are then at the end of that way long down there hallway. And then they have to walk them down the hallway. During the day, the other people that are in the hallway are families getting their passports down at the clerk of court's office. They're all you people, when you, um, get a, a traffic ticket and you have to go pay, one, he wants to file a small claims lawsuit, you're down there. We have regular mom and pop people, just regular citizens in the county, walking up and down this way long hallway with inmates. And every single time an inmate walks by, what do they have to do? "Excuse me, excuse me, gotta move back like this." Because it's a security risk to walk an inmate with an armed deputy with citizens up and down the hallway. It is amazing to me that we haven't had a problem. Uh, but that's, when you walk out, please, look down that hallway, walk down to that secure elevator, and look at that long, long hallway that inmates need to be walked up and down multiple times every single day. And we have been doing this for years. I'll tell you one other thing about this building, and this building's serving us well. The jail used to be in this building, I don't know how many of you knew that, but the jail was right over there, yeah.
At the end of the hallway.
Yeah.
Where the grass was the champ.
Yeah, and right, right there, right there in the middle. And in fact, when you go down there, because you're all gonna go down there at the end of this meeting, you're gonna see there's a little cell, maybe sheriff, you could open that up if you got a key for it. There's one little cell, and I, yes, yes, honestly, I've been in that cell, I've met with clients when I was practicing a law as a defense attorney, met, sat in that cell, I don't know, countless, probably two hundred times, um, going through, you know, paperwork with clients. Um, that's where our jail used to be. So we did not have to walk people down this long hallway of death. Instead, we just walked them right around the corner. And, and like I said, this building has served us very, very well, but we have this long hallway now. So if you want to go to the next one, I think I made my point. Um, okay, oh, you covered up his face, he would have been fine. He's, he's a local attorney, his name is Gary Kreszek. I said, "Gary, I need you to help me, uh, talk about the ADA, uh, in our building." He's like, "What?" I said, "Help me talk about the Americans with Disabilities Act." Um, he's coming out of the bathroom there, so I caught him in a bad moment, but he's a nice guy, he would have been fine. Um, our bathrooms are not ADA compliant, our courtrooms are not ADA compliant. I don't even think you could get somebody in a wheelchair in our courtroom E, when, and we're gonna talk about courtroom E in a minute. But nothing about this building is ADA compliant on the second floor. You know, you can't, you go to the clerk's office, if, if you're in a wheelchair, you'd be looking up at the clerk like this because the counter is this high, uh, in the clerk's office. There's nothing about this. We once had a, a fellow in branch two who was a juror, um, called in to be a juror, and he's, there's, because they're not ADA compliant, the, the wheelchair was right in the middle and everybody had to walk around, and well, in this courtroom, we've got a second way that you could get in. In branch two, there's only one little, um, uh, walkway in the middle, and his wheelchair was stuck in the middle. And he made a deal about this, and so I actually went and looked it up. And one of the things about the Americans with Disabilities Act is you're not supposed to call attention to someone, you're suppo- that has a disability. You're not supposed to put them in a place where they would feel uncomfortable. So now we got this fellow who's smack dab in the middle of the hallway, nobody can get around him, and, and, um, he, he is supposed to be on the jury. Well, guess what, if he got a call to be on the jury, couldn't even get in the jury box because this is the only jury box that's ADA compliant, this is the only one that doesn't have stairs. So, you know, again, another problem. So for this little announcement, I thank Gary Kreszek for allowing me to take his picture walking out of the bathroom. You can go to the next slide. This one here, um, was actually a picture that was in the newspaper, um, or, you didn't need to cover up everyone's faces, that's okay. Um, I wanna, I want, I'm gonna, at this point, I'm gonna turn it, I'm gonna turn it over to Judge Milewski in just a moment, that he can talk about this picture. This picture was taken right outside the hallway here, and it's a, a fellow that's coming out. But again, I want to give you and leave you with one last thought before I turn it over to him, um, to, about, um, people and inmates mixing. And I want you to take off your, your hat that says, "You know what, he's a bad guy, he deserves it, he deserves to be shamed, he deserves to go to jail, he deserves to go to prison," or whatever. I want you to take that off and now think about yourself as like a fifteen-year-old, um, in secured detention. And imagine, because it would be very easy to replace, I could even maybe even tell you, our fifteen-year-olds that are in secured detention coming over for court hearings. I could tell you that guy right there is a fifteen-year-old, you, you wouldn't know any differently because we walk our fifteen-year-olds, and we walk our fourteen-year-olds, and our thirteen-year-olds, and our sixteen-year-olds that are in secured detention, we walk them up and down that long hallway just like that guy is about to be walked down the hallway, um, in exactly the same way. And the reason I said, "Take off your hat," that, you know, punishment is the, the point here, take that off for a second and think about the kid where we are now supposed to be using like the trauma-informed mentality when we're dealing with youth and juveniles. And if you've heard, you know, they're talking about rebuilding Lincoln Hills or, or building a new facility for, for young people, um, with a greater emphasis on rehabilitation. Imagine a fifteen-year-old, imagine your own kids walking down the hallway like this because we have no other way to bring in a, a young person, um, into this court or into any of the courts up here. Um, and, and when you think about the statutes, the statutes specifically tell us, chapter forty-eight, chapter nine thirty-eight, um, functions, um, juvenile things are supposed to be confidential. Anything about this picture look confidential to you? Anything about that? Right, right, you got my point, okay. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Judge Milewski, and, uh, we'll, we'll have questions afterwards.
Thanks Judge Baker. Um, just a real quick comment on that, so you have a highly trained deputy, he's properly armed, he has an escort deputy in front of him. That is a public, uh, hallway with, uh, litigants with their backs turned to the prisoner. They're having, they're having a conversation with their attorney. They're having a conversation with their attorney because there's no place for the attorneys to meet their clients in this building. If that prisoner, now, he may have a, he may have a stun apparatus on him, and that would be, uh, for the sheriff to talk to you about. But let's just say he was able to get away from the deputy. That person had been on the, on the lam for three years, and he, he had told law enforcement that he was not going to prison. He had every reason to flight, and he had flee, flown, flighted, flew the coop for, uh, for three years. And, uh, and so the point is, is that, um, he's a, you know, a high-risk person, and he's in the halls with everybody else. And our, our staff does an amazing job, it's court security, uh, but, but it, we have three branches at the intersection, all meeting, trying to get caseloads done, and everybody's mixing. The other thing that you also note is, uh, is that, um, as we've heard from Judge Baker, once you go down that hallway, if you're in the middle of the hallway and, you know, there isn't like a light that goes on that you have to clear the, clear the hallway for all the district attorney's office, the Flic Center, Family Law and Information Center, and this, and the clerk's office, that somehow you must stay in your office while they're transporting a, an off, a person down that hall to the secure elevator, that we just don't have that. Um, and that, finally, on that, on the hallway, it is a very long way for the court security staff to be looking down there. And, uh, that's just another issue, just as the sheriff told us about the pods, he'd like pods and having that type of jail. Um, real quickly, um, how many people, I, I counted, I think, seven or eight, have never been in a discussion like this because you're a new board member? All right, I think I did the right amount. Uh, that's a lot. And for the other people, uh, like Don Jankowski, who's been trying to get this thing built for twenty-some years who's been trying to get this thing built for 20 some years, right? Don, and that doesn't mean he's not doing a good job. It just means there's been so much discussion. You can come to branch two and you can see all the former plans. Judge Finn kept them all there if you'd like to, uh, read them. Um, they're collecting dust. Lincoln Hills, just real quickly to that question, the secured juvenile offender, uh, or excuse me, the, uh, juvenile offenders that are going to Lincoln Hill are subject to the SJO statute and they're there for, the judge makes a current, they make a finding and that's why they're being housed there. They are, uh, being sent there, they're not sentenced, they're there because of the statute. So for example, when I was in the other offices, the DA, when I prosecuted the armed robbers who were all juveniles, they got sent to Lincoln Hills because of their, the type of crime they committed and because of their type of supervision needed. Um, that's why they went to Lincoln Hills. Um, and Lincoln Hills eventually get closed and then they'll go somewhere else. Other things I just want to say, uh, get right to the courts afterwards, definitely support the sheriff. Um, as, when I was the DA, uh, you know, we have the Prison Rape Elimination Act that he has to comply with, but he, they're having issues. And we had, uh, so when we charged a 14 or 15-year-old with, uh, first degree intentional homicide as an attempt, he, uh, was in the juvenile detention center. And that's, technically, that's not proper. He's supposed to be held in the adult jail in a juvenile section. And we can't do that because of how our jail is constructed. So we need to be in compliance with the statute, ladies and gentlemen. And, uh, only other thing I'll just say about that is, do you really want someone accused of attempted homicide mixing with a juvenile who's uncontrollable? And that's why they're in the juvenile detention center. One's accused of a crime, the other one is just simply uncontrollable, running away from home. Do you want them mixing? Absolutely not. I talked to, uh, the sheriff before the meeting and, uh, we've set the security and facilities committee, uh, October 19th at 1:30. So we'll have that meeting. Uh, notice will go out and, uh, Supreme Court Rule 68 has various people on. County Board Chair, uh, he can put a member on as, as he fits, uh, sees fit. And, uh, that, uh, will have a good opportunity in that committee to discuss facilities and security, uh, working with the sheriff, Todd Noemfeldt and others. Um, and really what we have to do as the court, we have to answer our Supreme Court that this facility meets muster. In other words, that litigants, as I discussed, have a place to meet, confidentially discuss the matter. We, all the time in divorce cases, we want these cases to settle. So we vacate the branch, so then the parties can meet and actually get the thing done without the auspices of the judge hanging over them. A lot of times cases get settled because of that. I want to, uh, talk about courtroom E. Courtroom E is a very small courtroom. It's 840 square feet. Um, and if you walk in there, and I don't know if you've ever been in that room, but there's no exit, uh, for the judge, for the court staff, or for anybody else if there is a security, something happens in that courtroom. That room is used by, uh, Melissa Dahlkard, who's an excellent court commissioner. I hope we can keep her a very long time.
See, see where the stairs are? And so if you start in this corner, the first block is my office. The second block is the jury room. The next block is the room we're talking about, where it says 440 SF. That's the block we're talking about.
So that is a very small room. Behind the bench, unlike the other three branches, the judge, as you can see, has a door to essentially escape for, for, for an emergency. That branch, there is no escape hatch. And that is, that's a problem. So, you know, as I'm going to conclude my remarks, we can, as we all say in our own home budgets, nickel and dime, right? We could cut a hole in the wall. I'm sure Todd can do that, he's got all the tools. But then we're going to potentially affect a jury deliberation rule. If that, we can't have Melissa jumping through there when they're deliberating, that would then shut down branch one. That's their, uh, jury deliberate, three, excuse me. And I don't think Judge Baker would like that. Um, the other thing about family court, that is the number one area for conflict. I think we all anecdotally know that. People don't like getting divorced. People don't like the courts telling them what they're going to do with their own children and their home. And she has the first kick at all those cases where she's trying to get things taken care of and it can get very heated. She's in there, one way in, one way out, and often the court security will be sitting there. Um, but again, ladies and gentlemen, that is a confined setting. It also has, uh, um, some techno- technology needs, uh, that could be better in there, but I'll leave it at that. One other thing you should know, the legislature considers that to be a courtroom. So when they recently awarded new courtrooms to, uh, counties statewide, we get counted, that counts against us. So they consider us to have four courtrooms, when really, in all reality, we have three. So just remember that. Um, if we're going to have a, if we're going to be counted to have a fourth courtroom, we should really have it looking like a courtroom, uh, like, well, branch one, branch three. This is a multi-purpose, but this is a big space too. Um, I just want to also talk about, um, real, some specific security issues. February 23rd, 2018, right there. A defendant, uh, was sitting next to his attorney. The jury came in, right here, one way in, one way out for that jury. Through that door, Judge Flugger was at the bench. There was, I believe, one security officer in the back, or, no, actually, he would have been over here. Uh, the jury came back and that defendant was, uh, read the verdict and that defendant was, uh, found guilty of repeated sexual assault of a child. He's considered persistent repeater, which means that the court had to sentence him to life imprisonment with no possibility of release. That was it. He turned on his defense attorney. The security came running and if I recall, the jury was stuck in here. Everybody was stuck in here. They got the jury out and then another four deputies, if I remember, had to hold him down. He was a very powerful person. And I tell you that story sort of as an anecdote, just to let you know that, if you think about, now the judge could get out there, I think this person got out through that door, but there was, you know, that was a major situation. But thank God the jury was able to get out, but they had to proceed through here. I mean, they had the guy prone on the ground right there. Um, and they had to go past him. Um, I say that because in a new building, the jury has its own entrance on that wall. They come in in a secured corridor, they come in and they go out that way. The defendant will go through his entrance into a hallway, into a secure elevator, which we don't have. And that's what we need in a modern courthouse. Uh, security team would have its apparatus so that they can, uh, have their detail as they need it. Uh, so they're close to the prisoner in this case. I would also note that the other courtrooms have, uh, in-out problems for the jury and, uh, the other part, people in the room. I would also note that, uh, just on the facility, we are, again, nickel and diming some things. Uh, I've asked Todd and he's been very, uh, helpful. Uh, I have the original ceiling in, in my chambers from 1958, four, I guess. And, uh, it's, it's failing. I mean, uh, the lights are blinking and, and Todd's working on it, but you know, it's probably the electrical's going. Um, and it doesn't have enough candle power. So maybe we can get a new ceiling, but I'm just, I, I remind you this, that, uh, as we add more and more things to the building, uh, we still have the facility. I would also note that the modern courtroom, we would not, we would save dollars by not having to have the jury go in and out of the courtroom. We'd have white noise. The juries, uh, we, they have this noise that comes in the courtroom so that the parties can speak with the judge without having to have that jury go in and out of the courtroom. That's again, a security issue. It also is opportunity, or it, it creates delay, uh, and cost. I, I think I've said enough. Um, the, I just want to say one more thing on the question on cash bail. And real, very quickly, cash bail, uh, there's many ways to re- release a person on bond. Court can ask for deposit of cash, they can sign their own recognizance. They'd say, if you don't come to court, it's $1,500. Or there can be nothing, or you could put your house as an, as a surety. That, we have, we've ordered cash bail in cases since I've been judge and know Judge Baker has. And that's not going away. The issue is, is a little bit extraneous, is that some counties are getting sued for overusing cash bail. And that's really the issue.
I want to just say, I think, one comment about the incident that Judge Milewski talked about.
Judge, back to the mic, please.
I wanted to add one last comment. Um, so when that incident happened where the, um, defendant tackled his attorney and then turned and tried to get the gun from the, um, sheriff's deputy, when that happened, they sort of spilled over this way. April Zalinski is a clerk in, she's a deputy clerk in the clerk of court's office. April was right here. And the guy kind of just almost spilled onto her. And I got to tell you, that was back when I was clerk, I had to let her go home that day because that was an incredibly frightening event for her. An incredibly frightening incident for her to have to go through. Not to say anything or to diminish anyone else's experience that happened that day. I'm sure it was incredibly frightening for everybody. But I remember April coming back to the courtroom and talking about it. And, um, you know, really, really something, quite, quite the incident. Um, it, we, we have gone way past our time. I think that we'd both like to take a couple of questions, but I do want to be respectful of your time. If anything's really pressing, and I know that there's a full presentation planned for October as well. So anybody got anything pressing? God, we didn't manage to get one question. Wow. I can't believe it, they must be a fault of us.
Earl's giving us the evil eye.
Yeah, thank you. All right, well.
I got like five for you.
The, the whole, uh, respectful of time piece, we'll go to the next slide. We'll get through this and get to the punchline at the end. They've talked a lot about modernization, we're not going to go there anymore. Location, we just want everyone to know that we are spending a lot of time looking at downtown versus what a greenfield site could look like. And we're looking at it from all aspects and, and trying to let the data drive what that decision is. So just know that that's happening in the background. And then from a cost, we want to make sure that we're presenting options that are going to be the most fiscally responsible for consideration next month. So again, um, there's a little more opportunity that will come up where we can discuss any of those in more detail that you guys would want to discuss. Uh, if you go to the next slide. Okay, so what are the next steps? Tomorrow, we've got our fourth all-day design workshop. Those are focusing on adjacencies, adjacencies, and massing on how the buildings could fit on different sites. So the design will continue to advance, the pricing will continue to evolve. So we will have pricing of viable concepts for you on October 25th, um, when we're going to present to the board. I think there was one, sorry, get to my note here. So on the 25th, we are not expecting or anticipating a vote and a decision going forward. We're expecting that you're going to take the information, take the appropriate, appropriate amount of time to understand it, ask questions about it. But the things to be thinking about in October is, do we need to build? Right? Yes or no? I think there's been a lot of, uh, information presented today that really supports the case of why this project is important. The scope of phase one, and we're saying that because everyone that's been, done any remodeling on their house in the last year knows how expensive things have gotten, um, from a construction standpoint. So pr- pricing and project is going to be presented in three steps. There's going to be a jail law enforcement center component. There's going to be a court and court services component. And then there's going to be the government services component. And each of them are going to come with a price tag and an idea. So what does scope one need to look like? Or what, what would that look like? And then the third big question is really going to be about location. And we would ask you to take the data and use that to drive the decision. Um, we know that there's emotions attached to different locations. We've learned that as we've met with people. But from our experience, letting the data drive the best decision available for the county is really what we would just ask people to do. So with that.
Last two slides. Um, just in closing, um, I just wanted to reiterate, and thanks for everybody for speaking tonight. You know, we just gave you a project status, why this is important to you guys and why we're taking it so seriously and why we're meeting all day and, you know, having, having work sessions. And then Mike just left you with the next steps, um, which, which, you know, is coming right up, it's coming fast. Um, so in conclusion, you know, just, we've, we know what you have now, we understand your square footages. We talked a lot about those adjacencies and how they're just not working. Um, so what we're doing is putting those into practice, uh, on a design and the massing, how it should work, how that jury box should work, how it all lays out. Um, honestly, to, to peer counties, to the code, to whatever, um, i- is trending in, uh, uh, you know, ADA, um, use of, uh, elevators, things like that. So we understand why it's important and we're taking it very seriously. And then just the last slide here, uh, we're here to take questions. And I know you fired off a few, but we, we'll have more. What, what we would like to offer as your owners' reps is that if you want to have a one-on-one call with us, we will set that up. So we've got Chris Schultz, uh, from the procurement side of things at Portage County, who you can work through him and set up a, a one-on-one with, with Mike. And I'll likely be a Teams meeting, just, we, we, you know, just for ease. Uh, and we can show you screens, we can answer all your questions. So if you don't answer any, ask anything tonight, please take advantage of that, uh, so that you're prepared October 25th. That's it, thank you, appreciate that.
I would like to thank Judge Baker and Judge Milewski and also the sheriff for leading us through to tell us where we're at in today's world. How does it look and how, what can happen with what we're dealing with? So from there, we're going to have to make those decisions. Please take advantage of the one-on-one with, uh, Tegra. Basically, Chris will set this up, you give Chris a call, or Chris may even be calling you saying, do you want to meet? And you, how would you want to do it? Do you want to come in and Chris will work with you, will do the presentation, will do the videoing through in his office with you, just to make sure that you get this done and get a chance to understand where things are and how things are working. So please use that. And also be ready for the October 25th for the, uh, committee of a whole so that we can discuss this as a group, taking a look at what it is, looks like downtown, what it looks like in a green site. What are the costs? What are the pros and cons? So there's a lot going on in the next month and we're asking you to please listen and be with us as we go forward. Any questions? Barry.
Don, I'd just like to say thank you for your time. I know you've been at this for what seems like several decades now. Please keep at it till we get this done.
Notice there's no hair left.
Please stay at it till we get it accomplished.
Mike. Uh, just, another, a, a good way of, of keeping up with things as they develop. If you're not on the, I'm on the space and properties committee and we have usually very few, uh, people in the audience. Uh, but I would encourage all the, uh, all the supervisors, if you're not on that committee, swing in or do it virtually. It's, it's, every time we meet, there's something interesting that's happening and you can get yourself educated as you go along versus waiting till the last minute. But this, uh, Tegra is going to give you a, we're taking this nice and slow. And, uh, there, there, what we know, you will know within a, a few days or even a couple of weeks at the most. And, uh, as we all get educated at the same level, we'll be a much, uh, better deliberative body when we have to make some hard decisions.
Bob.
Yeah, the, um, October 25th meeting, is that going to be accessible in person by the public? There won't be questions, but will they be able to?
They'll, it, they'll be able to, uh, sit in the room here, we're going to do it in this room.
Listen and take notes.
It's going to be open to the public, but it will be only one topic, that will be the master plan.
Yeah, I get that, yeah, oh, thank you.
The, the committee of the whole just allows us to, uh, uh, not be as, quite as formal with the Roberts Rules of Order. Uh, and it's, uh, it's, it's a lot lighter, uh, way of, of moving through and having a discussion, so, and.
Mr. Weaver.
Is there an estimate on, um, when we'll see? I'm, I'm assuming that the 25th will be some options and is there an estimate on when we'll get that data to be able to evaluate it in advance of the 25th?
We are going to have our space and properties committee meeting on October 4th, that's the regular one. On October 11th, we're having a special meeting where we will hear a brief outline as to what's going to be presented on the 25th. Hopefully, we can get that data to you between that date and the 25th. Maybe it might come on the date of the board meeting, maybe we might have something to hand out to you at that time, the, a week before. I don't know. But this change is so. But this changes so rapidly when we, we're dealing with many different people.
Understood. And i- if it's feasible, I think it would be helpful to get the information so that we can digest it before seeing it for the first time on the 25th.
Okay. Any, yes, go ahead.
So what are you estimating as an actual vote date?
I would say that, okay, if we're looking at the October, maybe sometime in November, we'll be making some votes as to where we're at. What the Space and Properties Committee is going to have to do is make a resolution, address it to the committee level, and forward it to the board. So hopefully, by November, we'll have something that we can start digesting. Maybe the first vote will be just, do we build? So we get a feel from that standpoint. Then, we just spend some time discussing, okay, we're going to build, now what is that build and where is it? Right. Mr. Madine.
Don, could you introduce Joe, Joe Tartt, I can't pronounce his name properly, with Findorf and what his responsibilities are in the next month?
Okay. Joe, with Findorf in the back, Joe is going to be putting the price on this, so hopefully he can squeeze the dollars as best he can. Joe, you have any comments?
We're working hard on it already, and, and we'll have numbers for review, so it's, it's a tough ask, but we're at it.
Remember, this is a team effect. It's the staff, it's Findorf, it's Tegra, it's BRBW, and Duberry. That's a big team of people that are putting all this stuff together. And that's where, like tomorrow, will be a lot of activity going on.
So if there's no more questions, I would just like to say that for all the supervisors who have been here for a long time, and, and as well as the new ones, this is somewhat of a accelerated timeline or whatever, but we're trying to get as much information out to you, and it's important that you folks ask the questions. Don't, don't come to the meetings and, and ask them there. If you have enough time and it's, reach out to Todd, reach out to Chris, Don, myself, someone, Tegra, get you the answers and answer some of these questions so that you can make a good decision moving forward. But don't, don't wait and say, I don't know, because the question will be before you and you will have to make it. So it's important that you have the facts and have, all the resources are there for you, use them, so.
Also, make your decision based upon facts and information. Don't let emotions take over here, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the county board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time with such comments subject to reasonable control of county board chair set forth in Roberts' Rules of Order. I see no one here from the public. So, moving on. Confirmation of county executives' appointments and reappointments. Number seven, reappointment of Chris Dubek to the Housing Authority Board for a five-year term expiring September 30th, 2027. Motion by Supervisor Gifford, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, the various appointments to the local planning committee as follows, and if there's no objections, I will take them all as printed. I will take a motion by Supervisor Dubek, seconded by Supervisor Jankowski. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution and ordinances. Number nine, authorizing the Department of Natural Resources, Wisconsin Assessment Money Contractor Services Award Applications.
This is resolution number 43-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes the submission of an award application for the Spiritland Store for Wisconsin Assessment Money Contractor Services and authorizes Pam Shabelsky, County Treasurer, to take necessary action to comply with approved award activities.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion.
I would just like to suggest that this also has a technical amendment. It does not have a date on there, so I would just put submit or dated this 20th day of September 2022. This just follows procedure with all of our other resolutions and ordinances.
Well, motion for the amendment by Supervisor Jankowski, seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Discussion on the amendment. There's no discussion on the, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original motion as amended.
Jenny.
I just wanted to point out that this is a requirement of the DNR, not of the county. Typically, you don't have an application come through the whole.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we have a motion and a second and an amendment. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, approving and authorizing Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as Portage County's Health Plan Administrator for 2023.
This is resolution number 44-2022-2024 submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes to renew the Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as Portage County Health Plan Administrator for 2023.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Honle. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, approving and authorizing the Life ADD and D Insurance and Long-Term Disability Insurance Plan Provider for the Portage County Fringe Benefit Program for 2023 through 2024.
This is resolution number 45-2022-2024 submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes to renew with ReliaStar Life Insurance Company as Portage County's Life ADD and D Insurance and Long-Term Disability Insurance Plan Provider for the Fringe Benefit Program for 2023 through 2024.
Motion by Supervisor Rakowski, seconded by Supervisor Matt Jankowski. Discussion. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, approving and authorizing Health Source Solutions as Portage County's Wellness Vendor effective October 1st, 2022.
This is resolution number 46-2022-2024 submitted by the Human Resources Committee. This resolution approves and authorizes an agreement with Health Source Solutions as Portage County's Wellness Vendor effective October 1st, 2022.
Motion by Supervisor Maresi, seconded by Supervisor Pataki. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, authorizing the adoption of the Portage County 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
This is resolution number 47-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes the adoption of the Portage County 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Motion by Latik, seconded by Soik. Discussion.
Jennifer.
One of the things I just wanted to point out in the plan that was a little bit different from what we've adopted in the past, the first page is a listing of projects, the second page has a listing of offsetting user fees and other revenues. But we did make modification when it came to highway in terms of how they were going to get funded. If you recall, when we did the referendum question, we had to set our levy related to debt service for next year. We did that in April, so it kind of changed our plans for, we had planned that we were going to borrow money for highway this year. We did not because of not being able to make a debt service payment and increase the levy for next year because we were kind of locked in by the question. So we modified it to make an adjustment to use vehicle registration fees this year to pay for highways projects, which means that we will double up on debt service payments for 2023 and 2024, and then go back to the cycle of an every other year debt service vehicle registration fee kind of plan. But we did have to make a modification to kind of double up because of having to set that levy back in April. Had we issued debt this year, that would have meant we wouldn't have had a debt service payment to 2024. It would have kind of increased the cost of, of any debt issuance that we would have done, so we, we changed plans. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, authorizing 2022 Budget Amendments and Transfers.
This is resolution number 48-2022-2024 submitted by the Finance Committee. This resolution authorizes specified budget amendments and transfers, and this resolution requires a two-third super majority vote.
Motion by Supervisor Dodge, seconded by Supervisor Sislevich. Discussion. All those in favor with aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, resolution adopting and enacting revisions to Section 3.1.4.5 of the Code of Ordinances, adoption of Roberts' Rules of Order by amending members' speaking provision.
This is resolution number 49-2022-2024 submitted by the Executive Operations Committee. This resolution authorizes and adopts the revisions to Section 3.1.4.5 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Adoption of Roberts' Rules of Order by amending members' speaking provisions.
Motion by Supervisor Pataki, seconded by Supervisor Rakowski. Discussion. This came from the presentation that we had from Wisconsin Counties Association. It was one of the things that was on the list to move forward. So if there's no other discussion, Supervisor Weaver.
I appreciate Executive Ops.
Thank you.
Taking the step to do this. I just was curious if there was any consideration about not applying this at the committee level? One of the things that the resolution states is that it's intended to help enhance an opportunity for debate. Obviously, I think that here in the large board format, it makes a ton of sense, but I wonder if it may actually discourage debate, may make things feel a little bit more formal and, you know, the, our committees kind of have some different personalities and how they're run.
And I, I, your point's well taken, and I, I believe that you and I had even had some discussion on, on running of a committee versus a board meeting. And I agree with you that, and I've said it before, that the heavy lifting gets done in the committee and the ability, so many of those things are at the discretion of the chair during those meetings. And I would hope that on the committee levels, if you have five, six, 10, 10 people there, as long as the discussion is going well and everybody is, is having a good discussion, to allow it to happen. And I think that the more of the formality, and I've said it before, and Dave's probably going to get mad at me, but I, we have Roberts' Rules of Order and Bob's Rules of Order in the committee, and it's like, it's where you want to have the discussion, you want to have the debate, you want to have the input, is at the committee. We want to have most of those things all ironed out and all those, all those topics and rocks turned over and looked at before it gets here. When it gets here, most of that stuff should be ironed out. As we had seen in a lot of the other actions that we have taken tonight, we've got a motion and second and discussion, those questions were already answered or talked about in the committees or everybody feels comfortable with it. So I would, I would encourage that, and some of you have seen how during Executive Ops, when, when I'm running even those meetings, Supervisor Maresi had not signed in on one of them, and it's like, yes, I, go ahead. So, you know, it was informal, but again, I want to hear the people's input, and I, and I would encourage all the rest of you to do the same to the chairs of those committees. It's all at the discretion of the chair of those committees. Supervisor Weaver.
First off, I wouldn't have allowed Supervisor Maresi to.
I had no choice.
And, and I really agree with the, the spirit of what you're saying, and, and I, I think that's the right way, but the language here won't really give the chair that discretion. I mean, if you look at the language, there's no discretion. So I, I think in order to get to the spirit of what you're proposing, we would need to include some language which, which does that.
So I would just, you know, I look at, I look at even our public notice, and I don't know if it carries, if it's like a, a blank caveat with everything else, Dave, as well. Subject to the reasonable control of the, it's, in this case, it says county board chair, but it would be the committee chair when it's published, you know, and, but that's the public notice, but I guess in the breadth of, of what we're trying to do. Dave?
I think so. And the other, the other thing is, and there may be better parliamentarians out there than me, but one other thing that I think a committee could do in a situation like one where Supervisor Weaver is talking about, where if, because there's likely to be a lot of discussion at that committee, the committee could vote ahead of time at the beginning of the meeting to suspend this rule as it applies to that meeting, so that people could talk more than three times. And the committee itself as a whole, that way, you know, you've got buy-in from all the members of the committee, and it's not just the decision of the chair.
Does that, does it satisfy, I think, and everybody's here to hear, Supervisor Keller?
I just want to say, I think the, the spirit of the ruling here is to give the chair the authority to enforce. I don't think it's intended to be mandatory.
The other thing is, is, you know, even though it says five minutes, so if someone's talking for five minutes and 10 seconds, you know, it's, it's all how you want to enforce it as the chair, but it's a tool in your toolbox. Supervisor Weaver, you're on your thrice. This is thrice.
Look, I'm going to, I'm going to get, I'm going to get my at-bats in before you get this thing implemented. Again, I don't, I, I think everybody seems to agree with the spirit, but I mean, if you look at the language, it's not discretionary, it's quite mandatory. It says, no board or committee member may speak more than thrice on the same issue. I mean, it's, there's no permissive language. So I guess I'm just encouraging you to include some, some language which would actually be more consistent with, with the spirit of what you're trying to do. So if you just want to add something about, you know, subject to the discretion of, of the chair, then something to that effect, I think, would make it a little more clear.
Think about that a little. Supervisor Matt Jankowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to amend the emotion, amend the motion tonight for after, at the end of number two, after not the general subject, add the language, may be suspended by a majority vote of the committee or board.
What about the discretion of the chair? Would that work for you?
Or at the discretion of the chair.
Or discretion of the chair after that, because then it's just not the chair's control.
Okay. Did you get that?
So would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please. Slow.
And after subject, I'm assuming we would put, may be suspended by majority vote of the committee or board, period, or discretion of the chair. And I don't know if the period is right there, but I'm not a grammar expert, but somebody up here or in this room has to be.
I miss Mildred.
Dubek's an English teacher.
Oh, yeah. So, so I have a, an amendment by Supervisor Matt Jankowski. Do I have a second to that? Seconded by Supervisor Dubek. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Can you read that amendment one more time?
Your amendment is as follows, may be suspended by majority vote of the committee or?
Or.
Board. Sorry? On the, or the discretion of the chair. I can repeat that again, sorry.
Just as a point of clarification, is that also intended for item number three also? Same language?
No, because number three is.
No.
That wasn't. That wasn't part of my amendment.
No.
No, because that one is there to make sure that the others have an opportunity to speak.
They can still have as many opportunities, but to try and do it in a certain order, so. Okay. So back to the amendment. If there's no further discussion on the amendment, all those in favor on the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The amendment carries. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Supervisor Weaver, I'm sorry, Maresi?
Question on just the enforcement angle. I know at the committee level, we did talk about potentially having a clock in here, just to make sure things are fair. I don't know if this little red light doohickey would work, but...
Maria?
We found a solution for that, and we can display that up on the screen, so we got you covered.
Yeah, so it'll actually count down, so that'll be probably a tool that will work well, so. We're always striving to do better. So, all right. If there's no other discussion on the motion, the resolution as amended, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Supervisor Ladak, seconded by Supervisor Barry Jankowski. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.